IT staff, can we have one of you come down?
Good morning, Councilwoman Fortini checking in.
Good morning, we can hear you, thank you.
I'll be about 10 minutes late, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone, we're going to do a quick test of the national anthem, just a test.
Oh Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north strong and free. From far and wide, oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Hi Audrey, we've unmuted your mic, can we test your audio please?
Yep, I can unmute now.
Thank you, you'll be muted again until it's time for your item.
Okay, no problem, thank you.
Okay, we have all members present here today except for the deputy mayor and Councilwoman Fortini, are they online? They are online. And councillor, are they online? They are online. Okay, we've got some agenda updates from the clerk.
Dear Mayor Brown, revised agenda was published with the following updates. Six point one F, Community Safety Month. The proclamation month was corrected. And eighteen point five, Bylaw one seventy-three twenty-two-five, the title was corrected. And seven point two, the delegation has withdrawn.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other items?
One clarification, Mayor, I am on deputy mayor is on.
Yes, yes, we acknowledge you, Deputy Mayor. Councillor Santos.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. Would like to add an item in camera regarding negotiations, an update on negotiations under the clause two hundred and thirty-nine C, and spoke with the city solicitor to add it to closed session.
Okay, don't see other items. We have a motion moved by councillor Madero, second by councillor Tor to approve the agenda. All those in favor? Motion carries. This takes us to declarations of interest under the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. Do any members have a declaration of pecuniary interest under the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act for any matter to be considered on today's agenda? Seeing none, the clerk will so note. Adoption minutes. Do any members have questions or comments regarding the minutes from city council regular meeting September twenty-fourth? Seeing none, I have a motion moved by councillor Plesch, second by councillor Keenan to approve the minutes as published and circulated. All those in favor? Motion carries. This takes us to our consent motion. I will read out the consent items. And the clerk will read them back to us for those that will go into the consent agenda. Eight point one, Government Relations Matters. Ten point five-one Staff Report, Coordinated Homeless Encampment Response. Twelve point one Minutes Planning Development Committee. Twelve point two Minutes Committee of Council. Twelve point three Summary Recommendations Planning Development Committee. Twelve point four Minutes Audit Committee. Fourteen point one, hold. Fourteen point two Coordinated Encampment Response. Sixteen point one Refer Matters List. Nineteen point one Closed Session Minutes City Council September twenty-fourth. Nineteen point two Closed Session Minutes Committee of Council October first. Nineteen point three Closed Session Report Urban Sports Park Location Change, No Awards nine and ten. Okay, the clerk will read back the items to be held in consent, which I believe is just fourteen point one.
Dear Mayor Brown, all items on consent with the exception of fourteen point one.
I count sort of Plesch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was two items from last week that we're coming back with additional information. I did see emails from Laura. I don't know if I saw any other emails coming through with the questions that I was asking about the first quarterly reports. I think I didn't see anything on the agenda. Should I hold those minutes or? Are they on, are they on the agenda? Were they all just sent by way of email?
Through the chair to councillor Plesch, he might understand and all those emails went directly to council.
Okay, I think because I asked those questions in public and actually had some follow-up from residents, they want to see, they wanted to hear the answers, so we need to add those two in items. I'll refer that one item from the minute. I'll hold the minutes, Mr. Chair from.
Just the clerk, would that, could that be done under referred matters list?
No, I'll hold the minutes from last meeting.
So which item? Twelve point two?
Minutes from the last committee of council meeting.
Twelve point two.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so let's re-vote on that. We have a motion from councillor Plesch, councillor and councillor Keenan. All those in favor for the consent motion? Motion carries. This takes us to proclamations. We have several proclamations today. The first proclamation is for Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Day. Councillor Madero will also read that out.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Pregnancy and Infant's Loss Remembrance Day. Whereas on this day, we remember the babies that were gone too soon from stillbirth, miscarriage or medical termination. The goal of Pregnancy and Infant Loss Remembrance Day is to honor the babies that have been lost due to unforeseen circumstances of pregnancy, whether medical, stillbirth and/or miscarriage. Its aim is to build awareness and to have a day of awareness, a day where we can honor and remember the babies without any barriers. On October fifteenth, residents will gather and hold a vigil lighting in honor of the babies that families in Brampton have lost during a pregnancy or live birth. A flag will be raised in honor of the babies who lost their lives too soon. Therefore, Mayor Patrick Brown, upon, on behalf of Brampton City Council, do hereby proclaim October fifteenth as Pregnancy and Infant Loss Remembrance Day in the city of Brampton.
Thank you councillor Maderos. Or next, is there anyone here from the Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Day? Okay, our next proclamation is treaty, treat accessible preparation day. Councillor Power, who loves treats.
Treat Accessibility Preparation Day. On Halloween night, over eight hundred thousand Canadian children living with disabilities face accessibility barriers that can prevent them from participating in trick-or-treating tradition. Established in two thousand seventeen, treat accessibility started with one Canadian family looking to make Halloween more inclusive for everyone. Today, it is growing grassroots collection of accessibility advocates, children and families who partner with, who partner with the private sector, nonprofit organizations and government to advance accessibility considerations for children. Treat Accessibility provides free and simple tools, resources and tips to make any home offering treats on Halloween accessible to children living with mobility, sensory or intellectual disabilities. The goal of treat accessibility preparation or preparedness, Preparation Day is to encourage eight hundred thousand homes to achieve treat accessibility by twenty thirty. One home for every child living with disabilities in our country. Together, we can all do our part to help make Halloween in Canada the first equitable and accessible inclusive community Halloween tradition in the world. Therefore, I, Mayor Patrick Brown, on behalf of the city of Brampton City Council, do hereby proclaim October sixteenth as treat accessibility preparation day in the city of Brampton.
Thank you councillor Power. Is there anyone here on behalf of that proclamation? Seeing that, we'll make sure it's sent to the requestor. Our next proclamation is the Day of Hussein, which is October seventeenth, twenty-two-five. I know Erz here, who's here helped facilitate that, but councillor Brar.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. You must, Yum He Hussein, the Day of Hussein. Hussein, a seventh-century historical figure, is remembered for his courageous stand in pursuit of justice and dignity. And his legacy continues to inspire individuals across the world to uphold values of integrity, compassion and fairness in society. Hussein's unwavering commitment to the principles of equity and moral courage in the face of adversity remains a symbol of hope and resilience for people of all backgrounds. The Hussein Foundation is dedicated to fostering the values of social justice, unity and community engagement through inclusive dialogue, educational programs and public events that encourage mutual respect and shared understanding. Yum He Hussein, the Day of Hussein reflects the shared values of justice, unity and community cohesion. And its observance contributes to a more inclusive and compassionate society for all. Therefore, I, Mayor Patrick Brown, on behalf of Brampton City Council, do hereby proclaim October seventeen, twenty-two-five as Yum He Hussein, the Day of Hussein in city of Brampton. Thank you.
Thank you. And is there anyone here? I believe this is the Massaman Centre that organizes this. I don't see them here, but I know they have a flag raising coming up at city hall and councillor Maderos and councillor Keenan are representing the city at that, at that flag raising. As I will be at the OBCM meeting. It's actually occurring in Thunder Bay. Our next, our next proclamation is for Ontario Public Library Week. And councillor Visante is passionate about libraries and books and wants to read this out.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and I do share stewardship of the library together with councillor Brar. And so together we're here proclaiming Ontario Public Library Week. This week Brampton Library celebrates Ontario Public Library Week under the theme of Libraries of Life. Through its nine modern branches and online website, Brampton Library is building an inclusive community by inspiring learning, literacy and social cohesion. Brampton Library values creativity, curiosity, collaboration, community, connection and aspires to excellence in public service. Brampton's library system offers a wide range of books, media, activity kits, passes and other borrowable items at no cost. In addition, Brampton Library also provides programs, resources and support services for residents across a wide range of subjects. This week also coincides with Brampton Library's customer appreciation celebration in all of its branches. It is an opportunity to highlight the library as a cornerstone of a strong community. During the week, there are sales, surveys, information fairs, workshops, cultural celebrations, film screenings and chances to win prizes. We recognize the role libraries play in furthering social equity, accessibility and resident empowerment. Brampton Library strives to be known as a place for discovery, to grow capacity and response to community needs, build social cohesion, drive our leadership and emerge as Brampton's top choice for partnerships. From children and youth to seniors in all ages in between, Brampton's Public Library manifests this year's Ontario Public Library Week theme, Libraries for Life, offering many supportive and entertaining options for residents of all ages and interests. Together, we are building social cohesion in Brampton. Therefore, on behalf of Mayor Patrick Brown and on behalf of Brampton City Council, we do hereby proclaim October nineteenth to twenty-fifth, twenty-two-five as Ontario Public Library Week in the city of Brampton.
Thank you councillor Visante. Are, is there anyone here from the library, Brampton Library? Oh, great, wonderful, come forward. Tell us how we can celebrate Library Week in Brampton, October nineteenth.
So Mayor Brown, city and regional councillors and all those gathered here, thank you so much for proclaiming next week Ontario Public Library Week in Brampton. My name is June Dickinson and it's my privilege to serve as Brampton Library's manager of marketing and communications. Libraries are for life and Brampton Library stands for inclusion, diversity, equity and accessibility. Brampton Library is also pleased to be selected by the Ontario Library Association as this year's host library for Ontario Public Library Week and will be leveraging that opportunity to bring together a wide group of residents and exhibitors for our first ever college and university fair. So we're excited to have city councillors, members of the Ontario Library Association and our own library executive attend that event, which is next Thursday, October twenty-third, beginning at four P M. And I'm delighted to have Brittany Smith, our manager of adult and senior engagement, to take us through the programs for next week.
So we've got a great lineup of programs that are happening this week and I just wanted to share a couple of like key highlights with you. Along with our daily storytime STEM programming that we do for children, teen programs that we offer and senior socia ls, we've got a lot of really interesting programs that are happening. So this Saturday, October eighteenth, we have a Repair Cafe happening at our Four Corners location. The Repair Cafe is an opportunity for fixers, folks who are pretty handy in our community, to come together and show folks how to fix and repair household items at home. This program is so essential because it offers like intergenerational learning and offers an opportunity for folks to get together and for community to be built there. So that's happening this Saturday at our Four Corners Library. We also have our, we have a Storytime Adventures at our Sora Clark Library and Clareville branch on Sunday, October nineteenth, where we'll be celebrating Diwali. We'll have a special storytime all about the festival of lights and I really encourage families to come out and to participate and enjoy that. And we've got a teen program happening for teens where they're learning the intricacies of three D design. Beck will be with us to show folks how to get started, how to start a small business at our library. And again, we've got our community, our college and university fair at Springdale on Thursday, October twenty-third.
I, do we have any questions? Okay, well, we'll make sure that we get the word out to celebrate Library Week.
Thanks very much.
Thank you so much. And stay here because we're gonna have a photo with the proclamation shortly.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next proclamation is something councillor Santos is a big advocate for, and that's Women Entrepreneur Week, which is October twentieth to twenty-sixth.
Thank you so much through you, Mr. Mayor. Women Entrepreneur Week, whereas this week we recognize the value of women entrepreneurs who play a significant role in contributing to the social, economic and cultural fabric of our city and country. Whereas women entrepreneurs help drive Brampton's economic growth, innovation and community development, all while continuing to overcome systemic barriers. It is important to acknowledge that historically economic and industry structures have led to inequality for women. Despite this, women have continued to fight for equity, inclusion and recognition in business and entrepreneurship. During Women Entrepreneur Week, we celebrate the accomplishments of women entrepreneurs and acknowledge that they are a cornerstone of our communities. They are industry leaders and business owners and act as mentors to future generations of women and girls. The city of Brampton values equity, diversity and inclusion and aims to be a welcoming place where women entrepreneurs are able to succeed and thrive. Therefore, I, Mayor Patrick Brown, on behalf of Brampton City Council, do hereby proclaim October twentieth to twenty-sixth, twenty-two-five as Women Entrepreneur Week in the city of Brampton.
Thank you councillor Santos. Do we have anyone here for Women Entrepreneur Week? Wonderful.
Good morning and thank you to the city of Brampton for this proclamation. I am honored to stand here today on behalf of RPA Canada as chair of the RPA Women Entrepreneur Award Selection Committee. Part of my journey began in this city, so being here today for this historic recognition is meaningful. Women entrepreneurs are job creators, innovators and community builders who strengthen both local and national economies. This proclamation is more than symbolic. It is a commitment to opportunity. When women have access to resources and support, they don't just grow businesses, they build stronger communities and stronger futures. Thank you to Mayor Patrick Brown and Brampton Council for your partnership in advancing women in leadership and entrepreneurship. Together we rise. Thank you, and I would like to call Mina as part of our committee.
Thank you and good morning and thank you, Mayor Patrick Brown, members of Brampton City Council and city of Brampton for this wonderful recognition. On behalf of the RPA Women Entrepreneur Awards Committee, we are honored to accept this proclamation celebrating women's entrepreneurship and leadership. It shines a light on the incredible women driving innovation, building businesses and strengthening our communities every day. I'd also like to extend our gratitude to the RPA president, Subiru Choudhury, for his continued vision and support. As we prepare for our seventh annual RPA Women Entrepreneur Awards on October twenty-fifth, this proclamation reminds us why we do this work, to recognize, empower and inspire women who are shaping the future of entrepreneurship in Canada. Thank you again to the city of Brampton for this meaningful honor.
Thank you very much. And stay tuned because we'll have a proclamation to present with you. Our next proclamation is for Community Safety Month and councillor Plesch is the chair of our Community Safety Committee and was more than eager to celebrate November as Community Safety Month.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Community Safety Month, each November is recognized as Community Safety Month in the province of Ontario. In the city of Brampton's Community Safety Action Plan, twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-seven, a dedicated community safety wellbeing recognition awareness campaign was established. Led by the Community Safety Wellbeing Office, under the city's Community Safety Wellbeing Planning Framework, Community Safety Month will be observed in November. The aim of Community Safety Month is to promote, inform and raise awareness about the CSWO, initiatives that support community safety, wellbeing and content, connectedness. And booths at various locations across the city to interact with the public and provide, I skipped a whole line there, I apologize, and belonging. Throughout the Community Safety Month, the C S W O will set up education booths at various locations across the city to interact with the public and provide tools, tips, and resources that support community safety wellbeing. The C S W O will create opportunities for the public to complete the new survey to obtain feedback on safety concerns and ideas that can contribute to a stronger, safer Brampton. During Community Safety Month, the C S W O will also highlight the work of community leaders who build, who help build capacity, increase a sense of belonging, and connectedness through the city's affiliated neighborhood associations program and collaborative interfaith work. On behalf of Mayor Patrick Brown, city council do hereby proclaim November twenty-twenty-five as Community Safety Month in the city of Brampton.
Thank you councillor Plessy. Is there any representative here for Community Safety Month?
We have a lot of us here.
Okay.
Good morning, Mayor Brown, members of council, staff, and guests. My name is Amisha Muljani, a very proud Brampton resident and the main point of contact for the Leyd Law Park Neighborhood Association. I'm joined today by fellow members of neighborhood associations across the city. I have Asmi Riaz from Mosaic Brampton, Gurnam Singh Kerong, and Manjit Singh Randhawa from Stillman Park Association, Kim Romita from Stonegate, uh, Neighborhood Association, Navdeep Chopra from the L Section Neighborhood Association, Vinit Aurora from the Dreamers Association, Ramat Kil from the Dreamers Association, and Asmat Khalida from Mosaic Brampton. And we are all part of Brampton's affiliated Neighborhood Association program. I would also like to highlight that we have a number of neighborhood associations that are happily watching this delegation online through the live stream. The Community Safety and Wellbeing Office, also known as the C S W O, launched this program in twenty-twenty-four. The program supports-
Uh, is this, um, Leylaw Neighbor Association?
Yes, you were there, Mayor.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
And so, this is fine, this is seven point one, we're just looking, we're working for a response to Community Safety Month. It's the same? Okay. Okay. Okay, so this is the response to the Community Safety proclamation?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. The program was launched in twenty-twenty-four. It supports C S W O's vision of an empowered and connected Brampton, where everyone feels safe, has a sense of belonging, and has their needs met. This piqued our interest, and we were very happy to participate. Now in its second year, we are excited to be a part of the new program's growth. Participation has increased by thirty-seven percent with fifty-two active new and returning neighborhoods, neighborhood associations, who are all building connections and a sense of belonging amongst their neighbors. Growing up in India in a very vibrant neighborhood, my fondest memories are those of celebrating various festivals and events with my community. I wanted my children to create similar memories and experiences while also feeling safe within our own neighborhood. This program ticked off all those boxes, so I began to engage my neighbors, and we formed an affiliated neighborhood association. Today, I am grateful and honored to speak on behalf of our delegation to share the fantastic ways this program has impacted my neighborhood and neighborhoods across the city of Brampton. We are here to highlight the difference this program makes when it comes to safety and wellbeing in our community. Prior to being here today, we as a delegation shared our experiences about how the program has benefited our respective neighborhoods, and we identified the following: An increased sense of safety. Through our projects, we get to know each other, and honestly, it's nice to live in a name, in a community where everyone knows everyone, and that makes us all feel safer. An increased sense of awareness. We are becoming more familiar with one another. We knock on each other's doors for support. We are collaborative with one another and remain connected through technology. Thank you WhatsApp. An increased sense of empowerment. Through the Neighborhood, Neighborhood Association program, we feel empowered and engaged. By sharing our common concerns through a formalized Neighborhood Association process, we feel empowered. Beyond that, we would also agree that the members of our associations have been motivated by seeing our local councillors at our projects, as well as their continued willingness to attend meetings when we want to share our concerns. A very special shout out to my own ward councillors, councillor Santos, and councillor Vicente. An increased sense of belonging. We all have seen increased connections and new friendships. We have seen people from diverse backgrounds come together as a community, which has resulted in sharing each other's cultures and traditions. All of this has truly led to an increased sense of belonging. As a side note, last year when we formed our association, I went one step ahead and I created a logo for our neighborhood association, just so our neighbors could identify and recognize and bond with each other. We approve that this program works. It's not just about events or initiatives. It's about building a community where safety, awareness, and connection are at the heart of everything. Today, as we mark November as Community Safety Month, I am honored to be here along with fellow leaders from neighborhood associations across the city. Community safety and wellbeing is on top of everyone's mind, and as one member said so beautifully, because of this program, we are more united and we stand together. We have all been proud to join the program and be leaders in our community, and are even more proud to be here today to recognize this important day and be part of this proclamation. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Um, thank you for your delegation and, um, stay, uh, put, because we're gonna have some photos shortly.
Thank you very much.
Another delegation? Same item? Do you want to do? So, um, did you want to do s- seven point one now as well, on the same topic? Who is delegating for seven point one? Audrey's online, okay. Audrey, did you want to proceed?
Sure, thank you so much. Uh, good morning, Mayor Brown, members of council, staff, and guests. My name is Audrey Manette, and I'm the Director of Engagement and Services at the Canadian Centre for Safer Communities. Uh, thanks so much for the opportunity to speak today. The Canadian Centre for Safer Communities, or C C F S C for short, is a national organization that works directly with municipalities and other orders of government all across Canada on strategic planning, knowledge exchange, and research projects in the areas of community safety and wellbeing planning. In two thousand nineteen, through Ontario's Community Safety and Policing Act, municipalities were mandated to develop a community safety and wellbeing plan. In that context, the city of Brampton Council, I think, showed real foresight in recognizing how critical proactive community safety planning would be, especially in the context of a rapidly growing population and in the post-pandemic context as well. I think it's really exciting to see that council's commitment to community safety led to several key milestones, uh, such as the establishment of the Brampton Community Safety Advisory Committee, the creation of the Community Safety and Wellbeing Office, and of course, the launch of Brampton's first ever Community Safety Action Plan in twenty-twenty-two. As someone who spends a lot of time doing work around community safety and wellbeing planning all over the country, I see the Community Safety and Wellbeing Office in Brampton as an innovative dis- division that collaborates with multi-level partners to proactively reduce risks, respond to community concerns, and empower residents. It's a connector and a facilitator, bringing together residents, neighborhood associations, interfaith groups, and agencies to address safety and wellbeing issues. This is completely in line with best practices that we recommend at C C F S C. We know that having an office to coordinate this work is a key ingredient for successful implementation of C S W B efforts. When people think of safety, they often think of policing or emergency response. And while, of course, those are certainly important, they only represent part of the picture. Ontario's Community Safety and Wellbeing Framework identifies four levels of intervention: Incident Response, Risk Intervention, Prevention, and Social Development. Brampton's Community Safety and Wellbeing Office is active across all four of those levels. At the Risk Intervention level, the office works closely with partners to identify and support emerging issues and populations who are maybe more vulnerable or marginalized. At the Incident Response level, the office coordinates with emergency services what immediate action is needed. The other two levels, Prevention and Social Development, are particularly important because they focus on long-term proactive approaches to improving safety and wellbeing. Under Social Development, initiatives like Community Safety Month help raise awareness and engage residents in building safer communities. Brampton's Neighborhood Association program is another great example. It strengthens community connections, empowers local leadership, and supports a sense of belonging and pride in local neighborhoods. The Prevention level includes programs that address issues like youth violence, mental health, and neighborhood cohesion. So, so why does this matter? Across Canada, we know that communities are facing increasing social and economic pressures, whether that be from the rising cost of living, the national housing crisis, and, and so much more. Brampton's approach stands out because it doesn't stop at responding to critical incidents. It invests in upstream solutions, building a foundation for long-term resilience and community capacity. This is something that we at C C F S C recognize as an evidence-informed approach that leads to the most promising results in terms of safety at the local level. So to conclude, I want to reiterate that community safety is really a collective responsibility. In Brampton, I think the Community Safety and Wellbeing Office can really play a vital role in developing and maintaining the partnerships that help make this city a safer and, and more enjoyable place to live. Brampton should be proud of its many accomplishments in this area. From my perspective, as someone who does this work across the country, I think Brampton really stands out as a leader for its community safety work focused on collaboration, capacity building, and knowledge exchange. And so on behalf of the Canadian Centre for Safer Communities, I just want to extend congratulations to the city of Brampton on proclaiming your first ever Community Safety Month. Thank you so much.
Councillor Santos.
Thank you so much through you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the announcement and the two delegations. And I, I, as Chair of Community Services, where the Community Safety Wellbeing Office is situated, um, I just want to say thank you to the incredible work of the Community Safety Wellbeing Office team. And while, um, if, I don't know if folks know this, in terms of preventative safety measures, we are dealing with, in the Safety Office, the Litter Free Charter, which is something developed out of the Office, um, helping international students and the International Student Charter, encampment response, and that's what the Community Safety Office also deals with as well, in addition to the Interfaith Council and connection with our, our faith, um, and places of worship, and the Neighborhood Association, which has been a tremendous success in the city of Brampton. And I don't know if many people know where the Neighborhood Association idea came from. And it came from, uh, an idea that actually originated in the Planning Department back in like twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, when the Planning Department was doing neighborhood walkabouts, asking residents how to improve their local neighborhoods and their local parks and community centers. And while I was attending many of those initiatives through the Planning Department, we realized that in fact, the common theme when we were having these neighborhood walkabouts was safety. And people wanting to make their parks safer, their streets safer, their recreation facilities safer. And during COVID, I, I distinctly remember having a meeting with Resmin in our Community Safety Wellbeing Office, uh, team, and with the Commissioner of, uh, no, the Chief at the time, Fire Chief at the time, Bill Boyce, talking about this idea to transfer the concept that planning started into the formation of a neighborhood association. And that's where it all started. Be, it started from planning. And how to plan our cities based on residents' feedback in their local neighborhoods, how to plan it in a safer way. And with that, we had various conversations at council and a motion at council to make the neighbor associations as such, and in fact, bring money and, and local grants to support neighborhood associations in order to address safety issues in an upstream way. And that's how it came about, and now it is such a huge success, and I'm so proud. Amisha and the Mosaic and the Stillman Park Association who are here representing wards one and five, and I know throughout the, who are folks online in wards two, six, three, four, seven, eight, there are, and nine and ten, there are so many neighborhood associations who are doing incredible work through WhatsApp groups and utilizing the grant money to do their barbecues, road parties, cleanups, you name it. And so, thank you. Thank you to the Safety Office and team, the neighborhood associations for your incredible work. And a special shout out to the Chair of the Community Safety Advisory Committee, councillor Plessy, who, uh, started the idea of taking our safety meetings out into the community. And I believe councillor Plessy, the next one is in wards two and six. That's coming up very soon. I can't remember the date, too. October the twenty-fifth, third, October twenty-third at Jim Arch Deacon, correct? Yes. Jim Arch Deacon Recreation Center. I look forward to that as well. So congratulations, and thank you for all of your work.
Thank you councillor Santos. This brings us to our next item, which is from councillor, um, Keenan, and that is for Arjen Bambi, ten K U T M B runner.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. Uh, yeah, just an announcement here to recognize, um, an individual, and hopefully we can speed it up so that you can get, uh, back to school. Um, so just, just briefly before I get into your accomplishments, which actually made me tired reading them, uh, you run so much. Uh, we had met at a Bonnie Braise, uh, Seniors Group, myself and councillor Mederos were there for the Terry Fox run, and that you had approached me with your dad and you were talking about, you know, the education behind Terry Fox and, and how passionate you were about that. And then you told us about this upcoming run that you were doing, and I said, well, reach out to our offices and let us know how you did. Um, so I'm really happy to have you here today, and I'm, I'm just gonna read some of your accomplishments. For myself and councillor Plessy have a certificate for you, which we will give you and take a photo with the rest of council and the mayor, once we're done this. Um, and just to boot, both of my, to my two older kids, uh, today will run in a cross-country race, uh, for their school. So hopefully I get to catch that at some point today. Um, anyways, so thank you, Arjen, for coming in and allowing us to congratulate you on your recent success and giving us the opportunity to highlight your accomplishments. At fourteen years old, at the end of September, Arjen participated in a ten K Ultra Trail Whistler Run by U T M B, a global trail running event series that unify, a unified system of runners to qualify for championship races. Overall, he came in second place in the first, and first in his age group. The first place winner was thirty-two years old. The third place winner was thirty-six years old. Uh, the trail took Arjen halfway up, uh, Whistler Mountain to an elevation of seven hundred and fifty-one meters. He ran ten point seven kilometers in one hour and six minutes and twenty-two seconds. He spent the last year training and staying focused, which led him to being the youngest ever winner in the history of the U T M B ten K. Some previous accomplishments also include coming in ninth in the Ontario U eighteen in the T C S Toronto Five K Championship in twenty-twenty-three at the young age of eleven. Uh, that same year, he was third in Brampton's, uh, Don, uh, Don Don Dash Annual Five K in the U eighteen. Uh, he competed, uh, in fifteen K around the, uh, Bay Road Race in Hamilton in one hour and five minutes. Um, on top of being an incredible runner, he spends his free time volunteering for various organizations. Um, absolutely just incredible. Um, uh, once again, thank you, Arjen, for making Brampton proud. I also like to thank your father, Devinder, who stated that, uh, he was been training you since the young age of seven. Uh, so thank you for your family for supporting and encouraging you. Um, and just know that we are here at Brampton Council are extremely, extremely proud of your accomplishments, and we'll be cheering you on in future races. So thank you, and I, I would invite council, I don't know if we're taking pi- pictures with the other delegations, but at the same time, if we could take a picture with Arjen, we'll present this.
Thank you councillor Keenan. Arjen, would you like to say anything about your incredible work? I hate to put you on the spot, councillor Keenan was whispering in my ear. Yeah. Don't be shy. And you look like a runner.
First of all, I'd like to say thank you to everyone, to the mayor, to the regional councillors sitting here today. It's a huge accomplishment that I've achieved, and it, and it requires a lot of hard work, work to achieve. This is something which is not normal. It takes a lot of time to achieve it, and wh- once you start to get the process done, you'll complete it, and it's really good for you. So I'd like to, again, thank everyone who's sitting here today in front, to, who did this all for me. And that's it. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Arjen. Congratulations. My dad, mom, looks like she's gonna cry because she's so proud. Okay, uh, and we will take photos-
Okay, and we will take photos after this last announcement. We'll begin with a photo with Arjen, so you can get back to school and then take photos with the other delegations and announcements. The next announcement is National Public Works Week. Britta Meyer, Project Manager, Building Design and Construction, Public Works and Engineering, and Paul Swycol, Board Member, Canadian Public Works Association. Please come forward. Nice to see you. You have up to two minutes.
Good morning, members of council. Sorry, the mayor left. This is Paul Swycol from the Canadian National Public, sorry, Canadian National Public Association. Here with me today, I'm Britta Meyer, PM from Building Design and Construction, and this year's Chair of National Public Works Week.
On behalf of the Canadian Public Works Association, we'd like to present the National Public Works Week Community Over 100,000 Award for 2025 to the City of Brampton. This is for their outstanding efforts in commemoration of National Public Works Week, highlighting public works contributions and services that benefit and enrich their community. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, we're going to take some photos. Oh, sorry, Counsel, Counselor Vicente, I apologize.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and on behalf of myself as Chair of Public Works and Counselor Keenan, who Vice Chairs the Division, like to thank you for your presentation today. We certainly recognize the tremendous and excellence of work that our public works professionals here at the City of Brampton do. And a big shout out to Peter and everyone who works with him. Thank you for keeping our city running. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Counselor Vicente. We did miss the motion to receive the delegations earlier, so motion from Counselor Tor to receive the delegations, all in favor, anyone opposed that carries. The delegations have been received. And now we're going to take photos, starting with you, Arjen, and then the other delegations and public works announcements as well. Alrighty, thank you so much, everyone, for coming in for those photos. The next item is Government Relations, which was put into consent. Madam Clerk, can you help me find the next item? 12.2, Midi Committee, Committee of Minutes for the Committee of Council held by Counselor Plesch. Over to you, Counselor Plesch.
Thank you, Acting, Madam Acting Chair and Mr. Mayor. So I was able to, I think, I think I have all of them. I was able to print them off and briefly have a look at some of them. So I, I think what I'd like to ask, other than the ones that are just basic mistakes, like spelling mistakes or location mistakes, maybe the other ones can come to Committee or, yeah, Committee of Council next time. But I do have to ask, in particular, the response for the new 12 overhead doors at the, at the brand-new operation facility. I would have thought that it would have been warranted, but I'm shocked that we're having to replace all those doors. And I don't understand the comment about it's an issue for the user group. Who's the user group?
Sir, through the Chair, the user groups are the Road Operations Team and Fleet Team. The, the work on that facility was done in 2017, and the extended warranty did expire in 2020, so these issues with the operations of the door unfortunately materialized after 2020, after the warranty expired, and required this work to be done now at this time.
I can't believe that these doors have, are having to be replaced already, like it's for a brand-new facility. Also, I don't, like, it's us. It's not a user group, it's us. That's what I, that's why I didn't understand that comment either, but... Okay. It upsets, it's upsetting to hear that we have, we're having to replace, they're not cheap doors either, so it's upsetting to hear that we're having to replace them. Okay, so I'd like to refer that to next committee, so it can be on the, on the agenda. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Actually, Counselor Plesch, one more for you. You flagged in your questions the storage costs as well.
Yeah, it's in there, the storage costs of the, the hard copies. But I know that in, you know, I commend the work that Laura's doing, already looking for other opportunities to, to, to put those storage, to put those physical copies, to store them in-house. So I think it's just, it's probably way before your time. This is what we had always had done, is pay somebody to store boxes of, of stuff, which was a huge cost, but now that we, you know, have identified it, and Laura's already working to ensure that it's going to be changed.
Great, it has to be a more cost-efficient way. Thank you for flagging that, Counselor Plesch. Okay, so our next, oh.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that was item 9.2.2.
Okay. Moved by Counselor Plesch, seconded by Counselor Keenan. All those in favor, motion carries. This takes us to our next held item, which is... But that, that has been withdrawn, hasn't it? Oh, you speak to it, let's speak to it, yeah.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to refer this to staff, just making sure the resident did withdraw, but we want to make sure it's with appropriate staff, referring to staff. The correspondence.
Moved by Counselor Brower, seconded by Counselor Tor. To appropriate staff, report back. All those in favor, motion carries. This takes us to 16.2, discussion item from Counselor Plesch on Parks, Bench, and Tree Dedication Program.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So it was just a little bit of a miscommunication through our office and, and the Community Services team around the, the, the cost of the, the extension of the Bench and Tree Program. It's been, it's certainly been ratified now and solved, and thank you, Bill and Ed Fagan, for, for all the work that they've done. I do have a motion that I think Isha is just sending to the clerks now, that I'd like to, to read. And it states that, "Whereas the family of Gerjot Gill, a 20-year-old Brampton resident who tragically lost his life in a motorcycle accident at the intersection of Mayfield Road and Highway 10 in August of 2023, has expressed their wish to honor his memory through the city's tree dedication program. Gerjot was a proud graduate of Sean, of Jean Augustine, Saint John Augustine School, where he built lasting friendships and strong community ties. And whereas the family wishes to commemorate Gerjot's life ahead of his birthday on October 20th, 2025 by dedicating a tree and/or a bench in his honor. And whereas the family has requested that a memorial tree be planted near the site of the accident, and that a memorial bench be installed at or near Jean Augustine Secondary School to celebrate his life and enduring impact on his community. Therefore, be it resolved, the deadline for the 2025 tree dedication program be extended to allow the Gill family to participate in honoring their son's memory. Staff be directed to coordinate the planting of the memorial tree near the location of the accident, Mayfield Road and Highway 10. Therefore, also be resolved, staff be directed to install memorial bench at or near Jean Augustine Secondary School in consultation with the school board to determine feasibility and placement, and all applicable fees associated with the memorial and bench installation in the memory of Gerjot Gill be waived in recognition of the compassionate and exceptional nature of this request. And that other residents who have submitted similar requests for memorial trees and benches this year be permitted to participate under the extended program deadline."
Do you want to give that to the clerks as he gets it?
Yeah, yeah. Yep.
This is moved by Counselor Plesch, seconded by Counselor Brower. All those in favor, motion carries. This takes us to our next item, public question period. Are there any questions today from the public? No one in person, anything submitted online? Okay, this takes us to bylaws. I have a motion moved by Counselor Vicente, seconded by Counselor Power, to approve bylaws 169, 2025 to 176, 2025 inclusive. All those in favor, motion carries. This takes us to our closed session item. We have one item in closed session? 19.4. Okay, so this meeting is now recessed in order for council to consider its closed session business. To members watching today's public session, all meetings of council must start and end in public session after closed session is completed. Council reconvene in public session to complete this business on today's agenda, including reporting out any actions from this closed session portion of the meeting, passing and confirming bylaw to confirm the proceedings and decisions from this meeting and adjourning the meeting. To the clerk, how long would you like?
10 minutes. We just need a motion to approve going into closed.
Okay. Motion to go into closed, moved from Counselor Santos, seconded by Counselor Keenan. All those in favor, motion carries. All those in favor, motion carries. All those in favor, motion carries. All those in favor, motion carries.
[inaudible]
Councillor Mederos, Councillor Tor, Councillor Power, Councillor Plessey, Councillor Baur, Councillor Vicente, Councillor Santos. Online, we have Councillor Fratini, Councillor Keenan, okay. So we completed our in-camera discussion. In the continuing interest of transparency, open government, I will report in public session any outcomes of today's closed session business. As a result of our closed session today, we wish to report the following. I believe we have the motion we're gonna put on the screen for nineteen point four.
We have a report on the following items. Nineteen point one and nineteen point two were approved on consent and not discussed in closed. Nineteen point three was approved on consent, including direction that the following motion arise to be considered in open session. And then we'll have one more open session.
Okay, and the nineteen point three motion moved by Regional Councillor Tor, seconded by Councillor Power.
Mr. Chair, I would like to move this, please. Oh, no, this is a different one. Sorry, that's nineteen point three. Nineteen point four, I would like to move.
All those in favor, motion carries. The next item, nineteen point four. The staff be directed to begin the internal circulation process to declare the property surplus with intent to negotiate with Region Peel on a long-term lease for eight Rutherford Road South and report be brought back to council, moved by Councillor Santos, seconded by Councillor Keenan, Vicente and Mederos.
I had a question just regarding this motion to staff. Is there a requirement? I understand there's an internal process. Will the local councillors be consulted accordingly or is that not part of the, when you do a process?
To the Mayor, to Councillor Mederos, the internal process goes to all departments, department heads and external government agencies. And the consultation to council is when that report comes back.
Okay, at that time. Okay, thank you.
And so my understanding is that all other levels of government get notified first as part of the declaration. I think it's a bit of a legal process. For sure. Okay, so we have the motion moved by Councillor Santos, seconded by Councillor Keenan, Vicente and Mederos. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. This takes us to our confirming bylaw. I have a motion moved by Councillor Power and seconded by Councillor Baur to approve the confirming bylaw to confirm the proceedings and decisions from this meeting. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Our last item of business is item twenty-one, adjournment. Council's next scheduled to meet Wednesday, October twenty-ninth at nine thirty AM. I have a motion moved by Councillor Baur, seconded by Councillor Power, to adjourn today's meeting. All those in favor? Motion carries.